Miniman Clark.
Here.
Miniman Kratz.
Here.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Higbell.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have a lifesaving valor award presentation. At this time, I'd like to invite Middletown Fire Department Fire Chief William Kane Jr. and award recipients to the front of the room, Arthur Kaler, Anthony Waterston, Justin Lombardi. Please come forward.
So, well, good evening, everybody. I just want to first start off by by welcoming chiefs, Chief Kane, Chief Hope Sennett. You know, often we get the ability to stand up here, and fortunately, I haven't had to do it too often. To stand up here and talk about when tragedy strikes, people coming forward outside of our fire department, outside of our responders, talking about individuals helping neighbors. You know, far too often, we find ourselves only looking at the negatives that occur in life and and looking at the things that really define us as a community. You know, I'm so proud that in Middletown, we have the world's largest volunteer fire department, more than 500 individuals willing to serve at a moment's notice. But it really is, when push comes to shove and emergencies happen, people are defined in those moments. People are defined in their ability when they rush into a burning building, when they rush into danger, or when they're there to help a friend in need, family member, family member in distress, or somebody that just needs a little thing. Fortunately, these three gentlemen were there to assist in what put in a true Thanksgiving tragedy. And we're able to recognize this individual. Now, I'm just the mayor. We have our chiefs here, obviously. Chief Kane, before I present these gentlemen with a word, you want to say thank you? I don't want to draw people that will want to go into a verbal battle without a term. Fortunately, there are still people in the world that exist like you guys today, so I thought I'd say thank you. It's my right time.
So just by way of background, apologies for reading off the notes. This structured fire took place in northern Middletown on an early Thanksgiving morning, November 25th. Arthur Kaler forgot his honey supplies and was returned home when he saw that the house was on fire. Flagged somebody, being the water from here, down the street, and the two began banging on the door. With the assistance of Mr. McGarvey, who was inside the home, they got the door open, and the three, and these three gentlemen worked together to get the homeowner out of the house. It just so happened that Tony was driving down a different route that morning and would have never seen the fire. And I know that more than 50 firefighters in the Middletown Fire Department, four companies responded to this fire. Middletown's a great place because of its people. Whether they are members of our fire department who miss stairs, sporting events, things with their children, at a moment's notice, the fire call comes in. But the definition of a community is people who rise up when the moment comes. You don't know when that moment's going to happen, but it comes. And it's up to great people, wherever they may be, from whatever form of life they are, that jump in and react at a moment's notice. Gentlemen, thank you for jumping at that moment's notice. Really thank you.
So obviously, we have these lifesaving valor awards for the three of you. Like I said, I don't often give these out. I'm thankful for that, but when they do, I'm thankful that we have some souls that we had, especially in this situation. This award states, "In recognition of rescuing two adults from a burning home on Thanksgiving morning, November 25th, 2021, your swift response and bravery serves as an inspiration to all, and thanks for keeping the members of our community safe with this true act of peril presented on this day from the township committee." Thanks, guys. Guys, thank you very much. Yeah, we're good. I never want to mess with Donny. Thank you. Hello. When you start, you get roses and everything like that, you just keep smiling. Thanks, guys.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have a special township committee presentation honoring Maureen T. Raish. At this time, I'd like to invite Maureen Raish. Please come forward.
The great part about this is Maureen doesn't know that this was held as they're normally listed on the agenda. This is an incredibly bittersweet moment for me. Her resignation letter has been sitting on my desk for about 10 days now. I still haven't accepted it yet. Since January in 2002, there has been one consistent in the mayor's office, and that has been my incredible friend here, Maureen Raish, who has, well, at the end of this year, have served for 20 years building the mayor's office, showing what a mayor's office is capable of, training countless individuals, helping thousands of residents, and being somebody that is the definition of professionalism and integrity and just all around goodness. I don't even want to talk anymore. I just want to read off this proclamation because I'm not sure if there's much more I can say other than the fact that, well, you say it calmly, other than the fact that I am grateful to have been able to do this job with Maureen there, and it's going to be very hard for the next post to do it without you. But what is Middletown's loss certainly is Monmouth County's gain, and that is that there is a person in this world more suited to be an ex-Monmouth County surrogate than my great friend Maureen T. Raish right here. So while tonight is her last township committee meeting, she's still got a couple of weeks' worth of work to deal with. And as she knows, the work never stops. But there's nobody better in this world that was able to do this job than you. And I love it. So let me just go through a couple of these accomplishments here. She's done a few of these proclamations, but never been on the receiving end of it. Proclamation office of the mayor, Maureen T. Raish, assistant to the mayor. Whereas in January 2002, Maureen T. Raish was hired as the first secretary of the mayor when it became evident that the mayor and township committee needed comprehensive support with constituent services and government operations. And whereas over the last 20 years, Maureen has used her strong leadership, organizational skills, and out-of-hobby stinging to work alongside 10 different mayors to help advance his or her initiatives, as well as address complex resident and township issues. In 2014, she was promoted with the role of assistant to the mayor and has spent countless hours helping thousands of residents navigate township policies and ordinances by researching and answering inquiries on a variety of topics such as land use planning and environmental issues. Her exceptional institutional knowledge and uncanny ability to diffuse any situation and level of professionalism and confidentiality has made her a tremendous asset to the office of the mayor, an office that she has built from the ground up. And whereas Middletown is a place that she has called home for over 30 years, and she's dedicated her life to serving her community in a multitude of ways, she went above and beyond to assist with the planning of our annual Middletown Day Fall Festival and served as an integral member of the Middletown 350 Committee, a year-long celebration of the township's founding that is hominated with a memorable and successful parade that she's been involved, and she's been involved in many other volunteer committees, including the Middletown Disaster Relief Fund, a nonprofit that raised and distributed $1 million to families devastated by superstorm Sandy. She's also served both as a board member and president of the Link Ross Senior Housing Corporation. And whereas during her tenure, Maureen helped Middletown residents navigate through the grief that Niall led them to our community, working with the governing body and the founders who lost loved ones who established the Middletown World Trade Center Memorial Gardens, and went on to oversee the anniversary services that have brought healing and hope to men. And whereas Maureen is a caring, compassionate, and committed individual who has always elegantly and effectively handled the outreach and planning necessary to help facilitate successful township projects and initiatives, but has never once saw the glory. She could be content working behind the scenes while allowing those being recognized. And whereas Maureen has been steering the ship of the mayor's office for two decades, and the time has come for her to set sail on a new path where she'll be the captain. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tony Perry, in Middletown Township Committee, hereby proclaim this day, December 20, 2021, as Maureen T. Raish Day in Middletown Township, to extend our deep appreciation for her loyalty and admirable dedication to the community and the governing body. Middletown's loss certainly is in Monmouth County's gain, and we wish you all the best as our next county surrogate. We rightfully say.
Well, the good thing is, with this new office, comes a lot more space in that office. And given the fact that you've served 10 mayors, and eight of them have moved on to other things, Kevin and I are the only ones still, well, most of them are still living. But when former members move on, we've always had to be on the plot to represent the time that they spent in this township. And there's no better person, no more deserving person than to represent that time that 20 years spent with this township and to be prominently placed in the county surrogate's office. So the Middletown Township Committee presents this, the Maureen T. Raish, from within 20 years of dedicated service to 10 mayors, county's township committee members, and an infinite number of Middletown residents. Maureen, the lucky, thank you.
So being behind the scenes all these years, I never stood forward and said anything. And then I jumped into running for office. So I found my place. So I fought out, but I started to run in my decision to run. And I started in the mayor's office when 9/11 hit, related to something. That's really the catalyst moving forward. It's January 2002. It's just right after, a few months after 9/11. And I find it a bookend, and I'm leaving during COVID, 100-year pandemic. So there's a lot that's happened in between, Sandy, storms. There's a lot that's happened in between. But I found myself thinking about that. Three different private, three different police chiefs, three different administrators, 10 different mayors. I don't think I can count the either, all the township committee members. I served four qualified female mayors that we had, and I was lucky enough to meet the first female mayor, both of whom, she has passed. So I've been very honored to be in the role of mayor's secretary and assistant to the mayor, and I look forward to moving on, but I will miss everyone here, but I still will be in the county, and I'm still living. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Maureen. Okay.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have minutes for approval for November 15, 2021 regular meeting, and December 6, 2021 regular workshop meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Higbell.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have a public hearing for county bridge repair. This is for the county's McLees Bridge Repair Project.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on the county's project at the McLees Bridge, the repair project that is happening there, and step forward. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward here, any member of the public, wow, that's a lot of the same person. Any member of the public wishing to speak on the McLees Bridge Repair Project, Monmouth County's repair project on McLees Creek Bridge, you can use the raised hand feature. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public hearing. Does that need a vote? Yes.
We're closing.
Should, yeah. Motion. No, you're second.
Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Higbell.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to close the published, public hearing. At this time, we have a public hearing on proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance tonight is 2021-3325, an ordinance providing funding for sidewalk improvements throughout the township for the township of Middletown and appropriating $235,000 for such purpose.
All right, for the, just, uh, so everybody in the audience and everybody joining us via WebEx, for these next four public hearings, I'll start with anybody here in Town Hall and then move over, but they have to be done individually, right? Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3325, an ordinance providing funding for sidewalk improvements throughout the township appropriating $235,000 for such purpose. Any member of the public here at Town Hall? Seeing nobody here at Town Hall, anyone joining us via WebEx that would like to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3325? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion, then approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Higbell.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance for public hearing, 2021-3326, bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $2,575,000 for acquisition of Fairview Fields property located on Oak Hill Road, buy-in for the township of Middletown and the county of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $2,446,250 in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the appropriation.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3326? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward here at Town Hall, any member joining us via WebEx that wants to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3326? Seeing no members of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion, then approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Higbell.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance for public hearing, 2021-3327, an ordinance establishing fair market value for property identified as Block 865, Lot 134, generally known as Fairview Fields within the township of Middletown, and authorizing acquisition of Block 865, Lot 134 by purchase or eminent domain for the purpose of maintaining the public recreational facilities on site.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3327? No member of the public stepping forward here at Town Hall, any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3327, joining us via WebEx? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion, and approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Higbell.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance for public hearing, we have 2021-3328, an ordinance authorizing a street vacation of a portion of Texas Avenue in Middletown Township, Monmouth County, New Jersey.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3328 here at Town Hall? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward here at Town Hall, any member of the public joining us via WebEx that would like to speak on public ordinance number 2021-3328? You can use the raised hand feature. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion, and approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Higbell.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, I would like to ask the township committee to adopt an agenda which would include Resolutions 21-273 through 21-288, including bingo and raffle applications and a firefighter application for Michael Littner, Station 10.
Motion to approve for consent agenda. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setimbrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Higbell.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this consent agenda. This time, we have township committee comments.
Uh, Committeeman Clark. Early in the meeting, Mayor Perry recognized some members of the public for going above and beyond to help out their neighbor. And, you know, not just during this time of the year, but all year. It's really remarkable to hear stories like that. Our community is built on echoing the words of the mayor. In that same vein, our fire department, our OEM, and our EMS are always looking for new members. So if you're interested, you can reach out to the township. We'll get you in the right direction to join, so just keep that in the back pocket. Maureen, thank you. I got to work with you more as a fire chief than as township committee, but it's been an absolute pleasure, and I can't thank you enough for your commitment to our town for all the years before we got to meet and everything I've gotten to know you for since. Thank you so much, and I wish you the best of luck. I really do. Super excited to see where you take this, this next venture, because it's, the sky's the limit for you. It really is. And I'd just like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. It's a, it's an interesting time of year, right? And it's an interesting time in our lives. And sometimes we need good things to happen. And this year, between Hanukkah and Christmas and all the other holidays that we have, it's a time to think about good stuff. And, you know, if you're struggling, reach out, and if, if you're not, just be nice to somebody. You never know whose day you're going to change. Thank you. Thank you, Committeeman Clark. Committeeman Setimbrino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo Committeeman Clark's comments with regard to the fire department and lifesaving award. At time and time again, our fire department, the partners involved, the fire department in the world continues to impress me as a member of the township committee and put Middletown again on the map, so thank you so much. To, to Maureen, so I was, that I was mayor, I was not supposed to make mayor. And I've had six months, and I think that Maureen helped me get through that. She knew all the answers before I had the questions. So Maureen, bottom line, I want to thank you so much for helping me through that, that time, which I had the honor to lead the committee, and you helped me a lot. So, so thank you so much. Congratulations on your post as Monmouth County surrogate. And lastly, just to share a bit of a merit privilege and help. So I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes, so we have much to be thankful for, which is pretty good considering there's turmoil in the world also. So thankful we live in a community where we have neighbors whose first inclination is, is to help one another. So that's really, really to be applauded. And Maureen, in a very short time of my position here on township committee, you have been full of wisdom and, and really without hesitation have been so helpful and kind to me. And your friendship also is so much appreciated, and I will miss you for sure. But I'm very, very excited to see all of the good things that you do in the county, and Middletown will always be here calling, so we get to see you too. So that's wonderful. And Merry Christmas to everyone and a happy, healthy new year.
Thank you, Committeewoman Kratz. Deputy Mayor. Yes, just very brief here. Maureen, I just love that you were surprised and had no idea the plan here. So listen, I can't thank you. You are the best. You've done an amazing job, and I couldn't do what I do without you. You kept us all in line. You heard cats for many years, so that's your saying there, so everyone knows what that means. You kept us all together.
Rich knows.
That's where we all come from. Don't let Rich know. That's the one. But, Maureen, just an amazing job. I mean, it's just every day you come to work and you work as hard as you could, and I like to think that's exactly what I do, and you do it every day. So thank you for the service. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you.
I want to say one final thing about Maureen is that when I was sworn in as mayor, my first year, I was 28 years old, and a lot of people, I'm sure, thought that that was a disqualifying factor. But I think that there was a lot of people that was able to, that I hope I made proud in the three years in that amount of time. A lot of people that I've won over, hopefully, a lot of people that maybe still don't believe, and that's okay. But I think one comforting thing that a lot of people had, knowing that there was a 28-year-old mayor, was the fact that Maureen was going to be sitting there advising that 28-year-old mayor. And I wouldn't be the mayor, I, I, I believe that I was without the help and support of Maureen Raish. So, um, thank you. Thank you, Maureen. I do want to say one thing about a loss in our community that, that we just had. Bill Schweitzer, longtime small business owner in town, the father of former fire chief Steve Schweitzer, passed away yesterday after a quick stay in hospice. And Steve, I think, I think he was, I think Bill was 89, I want to say. And Steve, you know, is Middletown through and through. Adon Pools, the, the company that, that Bill, you know, built up and, and made a fixture of the community. and made a fixture of the community, um, uh, he was, I was on the phone with, uh, Chief Schweitzer earlier today and, and he said he's the hardest working guy I ever met and that is, is clear in the, um, in the raising of, of former chief Steve Schweitzer is that, you know, Steve is one of the hardest working guys you're ever gonna see and, uh, and, and that, you know, institutional upbringing that, that Bill provided him, you know, a Korean War veteran, uh, and a small business owner, um, and a fixture of the Middletown community for a long time, so, um, I wanna extend my sincere condolences to Steve, to Chief Schweitzer, his entire family, you know, it wasn't that, just maybe only a year ago that Steve lost his mom as well, um, so it, it's been, uh, it's been a tough year, um, for, for him and his family and I wanna extend then my sincere condolences, um, um, with that, with their loss of, of Bill, so, um, and finally, um, this is the last Township Committee meeting of two thousand and twenty-one, this has been my third year serving, uh, and sitting in this chair and I just wanna say it has been the absolute honor of my life to be able to sit and serve as your mayor over the course of that time, um, and we'll be reorgani- reorganizing on January second, um, and I just wanna say that it has been my absolute privilege serving in this capacity, um, getting to know a, a lot of people over the course of those three years, meeting a lot of people, having incredible conversations with people along, along the trail and with every accomplishment that we've shared over the last three years, it has been an absolute privilege despite COVID-nineteen, despite not one of my years being similar to the one before, uh, it has been an absolute honor to sit in this chair and to serve the people of this town. With that being said, I'll open it up for. Oh, I'll open it up for public comment. The deputy mayor decided to hand me a void sticker.
I got all coming.
For whatever that means, just to break the tension, I guess, um, but, uh, with that being said, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment, um, we'll ask that you step forward, um, please state your name and address for the record, we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes, at four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining and if you can begin to wrap up your comments. With that being said, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yes, sir. Step right up to the microphone right here.
Lawrence, how's it going? How are you? I guess I'm trying to figure out how to get the township to respond. I had a roadworks engineer get in and repair my house, but I was looking for an easement on the property that has, uh, it's a, it's a drainage ditch from the roadway, but there's a whole retaining wall and everything, it's all collapsed. I have two small kids and there's at least a ten-foot drop from the top of this retaining wall. Public Works came out after, took about six months, real nice guy, Bobby Kimball, couldn't have been nicer, cleaned the whole thing out, pipes rotten, he said, this is a problem, we need to get this hooked up, so he had this Ian guy come down, looked at it and said, your solution, I got a solution, put a fence around it, made it. I brought pictures of it, I have, I, I tried to get this work done for years.
You have pictures, yeah.
Okay.
You can bring them forward.
Okay.
Thank you. You said Powell Avenue?
Oh, okay, so you can kinda, um.
And what did he recommend you do, I'm sorry, he was.
Yeah, he, he said to me, so Bobby Kimball was there, Ian Ember and myself, he said, well, I got a simple solution, you should put a fence around it. It's an easement, township has an easement on the property, the pipe that's there is, it's gone, I mean, you can see it in pictures, you can see it, there's sinkhole starting to form because it's rusting away. My concern, I really didn't care about it, I've been there ten years and I just let it overgrow because, you know, it's like a fence for my neighbors. But my son almost fell into it, that's a problem, there's, there's rebar slicker there, there must have been a fence there one time long before I owned that house, uh, but it's all gone, it's all rotten.
Okay.
It's gotta be fifty, sixty years old.
Yeah.
Uh, and, they actually, the water was soaked, it backed up, they, Public Works, I gotta give them credit, they did an awesome job, they cleaned it up, got the water flowing again, so we couldn't even really use the backyard because the bugs were still, because the water wouldn't flow, because the whole thing, as a road is from.
So, so, so the, you're saying though that the pipe was not replaced?
No, he, the, the Public Works guy said, we gotta replace this pipe, it's rotten.
Okay.
But I guess the engineer felt differently. Uh, you know, and I, if I didn't have kids, I would just let it go.
Yeah.
Because I really, I guess, it's a nice battery.
It's, it's.
It's a safety, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a big safety, yes.
Okay.
Um, and putting a fence up isn't gonna solve it because there's, it's a ten-foot or more drop from the top of that retaining wall into the.
Are you familiar, are you familiar with this? Where are those pictures?
And I've left messages, emails for this Ian Ember guy, nothing, no response, not even, hey, I got your message, I'm looking into it. His solution was put a fence up and move on.
Do you have those pictures?
And I, I mean, I brought a copy of my survey too, because you could see where the easement is, the whole thing's bizarre because the easement is only halfway on my property and then it's storming, it's a storm drain and then as soon as it hits the property line, it's, so my, there's like a fifty or sixty-foot part of my property that's open, but the rest of the way is blocked. Which doesn't make it very soon, but I mean, I'm not, I'm.
Ted? What's the, what's the length of pipe that's drained on your property?
I mean, as far as you can see, when you look into the tiny feed, is it fifteen, how long? It goes from the stream, it's going out about fifty foot into my property, that it does pipe the stream, then it's, it's opened from, from that point and so.
Yes. This week. Can, can you give Ted your contact information, please, and Ted, give him your, your card? Ted's gonna, Ted is, uh, the director of our Public Works.
Yeah.
He'll, uh, he'll give you his business card and, uh, and meet you out there. Ted, can you get there this week? Okay. So, um.
Yeah, and I mean, I, and I give kudos to Public Works, they came and did an awesome job, like for what they could do within their, they got that.
Well, Ted's a, Ted's a PE, so, I, I don't know what.
Credit, because they, they did a great job.
I don't know what engineer was, was handling, do, do you know? Assuming it's coming in here and going into a storm drain, okay. Oh, no, uh, this is Ian's card.
Yeah, he's not an engineer.
He's not an engineer.
Okay.
Um, okay, but we'll.
My, 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 my guess is he may have said until it's fixed, fence it so no one falls in it, which would make sense.
I wouldn't even know, we're a smart fence in it.
All right, so.
We can, we can do that.
All right, so he's gonna call you, you schedule a time?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, can you, um, we don't need this survey, do we?
If you want, yeah.
Well, I, I wonder why the.
I just have to, just for the record, I just have to have you step back there.
I guess if that's gonna go the whole way, it shouldn't have whole thing easement, because it.
Well, it depends, I, I don't even know if it's a township easement based on this, but we'll, we'll.
Yeah, it's in it, it's in it. But only that portion of it's easement and the rest of it's stolen.
Yeah, that is weird.
It's strange.
Normally, they would just go the whole.
Normally, it'd be a whole way, you know, just a little area.
Because I, I mean, not that it would go in, but then I'd say, well, it's not even a show, I mean, I'd be.
It's very strange.
All right, and, uh, here's a photograph, it's bad. There you go. All right, um, all right, so, so get in touch with him, Laura, can you get, um, this gentleman your card as well so that we can be in the loop on everything, okay, Laura, Laura works for me?
Merry Christmas.
Okay, thank you, Merry Christmas. Okay, yes, sir, step forward.
Hi, my name's Bradley Bennett, I, um, for those of you who don't know me, I had a snow climbing contract actually in the township, um, we signed it two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one, as you know, this past summer, there was extensions on the contract, uh, we were the only company that was not extended, um, after trying to get in touch with Public Works since June, July, August, September, finally got a meeting two weeks ago, uh, with Ted. I had, the only answer is I had my, the only reason my contract wasn't extended is that I had too many complaints, uh, after open recording and we were digging, I think this is the only reason we got, uh, uh, an appointment in the first place, there's over seventy-five pages of complaints here and there's two other contractors that have more of a place than I do, uh, so I, I don't know what the excuse was for my contract not being extended, um, after speaking with Ted, he said that he would look into it, I tried to get in touch with him now for two to three weeks since the meeting and other, so I didn't know if the Township Committee was aware of this, um, or if there's any reasons, also, my section was given to Mr. Frank Sutton, it did not go out to him, it was just given to Frank, so I was just looking for answers.
I'm unaware of this, um.
Ted, you wanna? I'm aware of it, but I would recommend not discussing that at the public meeting.
Okay. Um, wait, Ted, Ted, just, um, so on the advice of counsel, I'm being informed that we should not have this discussed in, in public setting.
Okay.
Yeah, um.
I sent three emails to you, Lori Hubbard, Victor Wims and, uh, Valerie Robinson. No, no, I responded to your email this evening, actually.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, Tony, can we make sure that a meeting gets set up for Mr. Bennett and, um, Ted and yourself, please? Okay. We'll be in touch soon.
Yeah, appreciate the.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Any member of the public wishing, yes, Bruce, go on forward.
Bruce Stafford, thirty-nine brain arm for Monmouth, this question for starters.
You can direct it to me and I'll direct it to Ted, I'm the traffic cop. Go ahead.
Really, uh, we actually discussed this briefly before the meeting, uh, it's about the valve on Wilson Avenue that hasn't worked for over two years now.
Yeah.
Seis was out there on December sixth, inspected the valve.
Mm-hmm.
I've been told that the valve checked out okay, it's a truck out there, they did a lot of work to clean and debris and everything out of the way and to the best of my knowledge, the valve opens, it closes down, bang. Automatically, it's still not working. In discussion with Ted, it tells me that another contractor was supposed to be there and they, they showed up on December sixth, it made it. But they have to get this other contractor out there from PCS, I believe it is. I just like that at this point in time, he's gonna show up, because the control panel, lights on the control panel indicate that the valve is open and closed at the same time, both green light for open, red light for closed, they both lit at the same time. The full light between them, I've never seen it light up, that should be lit now too, because the valve is open as we speak.
Did Ted, were you able to give him a date on that?
We have to be, we don't have a date yet from that contractor, maybe an issue between the controls system and then there's the manual guard, they, that the actual cage, intermediary device that might be a problem, so we're not sure what the problem is, but it is manually operated to have, uh, the ability to control floods.
Even though we did flood today?
Street flood or just the gutter?
It was up out of the storm drains.
Sometimes we're not about flooding.
We had a storm moment a few days ago, that's why. Well. Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I can honestly say for Monmouth, because Monmouth might have been under water because they're lower, there's a couple times when the tides come in, Monmouth goes completely underwater where I might be eight feet away from the storm drain and Ted knows that there's times it even comes out on Wilson, which is the highest stream, where it comes out of the storm drain there, and that's because that valve was malfunctioning, it wasn't seating properly, even in the closed position, the tide was coming in, going out, closed valve.
Mm-hmm.
It should not do that anymore, right? Even work with the valve manually.
But if we did, you monitor the time tables, we could, we'll leave it open, it's a charge. That was the case that I had to get adjusted this whole week.
Is the contractor PCS? You give me a call, they're gonna arrive. Like I said, Tony, this has been going on for over two years now, we had a meeting, I believe, August fifth at nine-thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
Still not fixed, I know we're working on it, but we have two tide changes a day.
You're the reason I have a tide clock in my house.
I have a tide chart.
I'm sure, um, okay, so Ted, this week, get a date from him so that we can get over to Bruce and tell him so that he can let his neighbors know as well, um, wh- when they're coming out, please.
I appreciate that.
All right, and Bruce, call me, call me on, uh, you know, Thursday, if you, if you haven't heard, call, call the office, but.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bruce. Okay, any other member of the, the public wishing to make a public comment? Okay, anybody joining, any member of the public joining us via WebEx that would like to make a public comment, you can use the raised hand feature. Blessings. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Sanabrinno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.
Have a good night, everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.